In order, please, I have to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're good? I got one second. We're gonna give Commissioner Doran one second. While we're giving him one second, I'm just gonna welcome everybody to the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four edition of the Board of Commissioners meeting. Dan, do you need a key? He's good. I do want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting. We are being recorded via audio and video. And if you want to address the board, please come to the dais and give us your name and address for the record. Let's see, I'm gonna hold off on for Commissioner Doran for just a second. When he comes back, he's pretty quick. As long as we don't have Tim sing to us, we're gonna be good to go. Guess we skipped, we don't have any additions to the agenda, do we? Okay, at this time, awards, recognitions, and correspondence, Commissioner Tim.
Um, Kelsey Graves. Come on up. Hi, Kelsey, how are you? Did you know about this?
Uh, just now. This morning.
Well, I'm gonna read this. The Yumitella County Employee Excellence Committee was created to acknowledge and commend the efforts of employees who serve the citizens of the county efficiently and effectively, with a focus on professional development and outstanding customer service. You are the employee of the quarter for July, August, and September twenty twenty-four. In that spirit, the committee wishes to share with you the nomination letter from your peers that warranted this recognition. Kelsey is one of many hardworking RNs in our department. She works half-time in our clinic and the other half of the time she works with the nurse family partnership. Kelsey is constantly on the go between the two programs, but she always finds time for everything. She also managed to find the time to enroll and thrive in the Leadership Academy last year. Kelsey always puts her clients and clinic above all else. She always has the time to take a phone call and answer a question. I've worked in the medical field for over ten years now and have never met a, met someone as dedicated and passionate as Kelsey. Congratulations. Oh, great, great. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You can leave the cheering section here.
I like that. You guys definitely raised the bar.
Oh, for sure. That was excellent.
Uh, you know what? Being an RN is not easy. No, Rachel. Being an RN is not easy.
No.
So, yeah.
Commissioner Doran?
Yes, real quick, I have a commendation. This was submitted by Sergeant Laura Sella. So, on oh nine thirty, twenty twenty-four, at six fifty-five, Danielle took a call of a domestic that happened on Appleton Road. A neighbor to the victim called dispatch to report a female knocked on his door seeking assistance. The woman had sustained injuries consistent with strangulation and physical assault, and she exhibited additional visible injuries. She expressed concern for her infant, who left in her mobile home with alleged perpetrator. At seven fifteen, Danielle received a call from the male suspect engaging conversation for a duration of one hour and twenty-five minutes. She effectively allowed the suspect to express his perspective while simultaneously gathering information that had not been disclosed during the initial call for service. Danielle consistently upheld a calm and professional demeanor during the call, which played a significant role in diffusing the tension with the male reporter. By the conclusion of the call, the suspect indicated that he would only comply with law enforcement if Danielle remained on the line, stating he would only communicate with Sergeant Roberts under the same condition. Ultimately, Danielle persuaded the suspect to work with Sergeant Roberts in the end of the one and a half hour call, after which he disconnected. Sergeant Roberts commended Danielle for her excellent efforts in encouraging the suspect to provide information regarding his phone or location as the night passed on. In summary, Danielle's capacity to maintain composure, empathy, and professionalism during the assault, the assault call involving both the victim and the perpetrator demonstrates exemplary service. Danielle's exceptional performance reflects the core values of Yumitella County Sheriff's Office, submitted by Sergeant Terry Laura Selleck. Commendation for Danielle Gibbons.
Fantastic. Thank you, thank you. All right, uh, now it's time for public input, direct conditions, and visitors to discuss anything that's not on the agenda. Now is your time to address the board. Hearing and seeing none. Approval of minutes, previous minutes, October second. Motion for approval. Got a motion, a second? All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll go to the business items. Item number one is road vacation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fellowes, Public Works Director. So, before the board today is a request to vacate a portion of Generation Road down in Hermiston. This is a public road down there. The purpose of the vacation, as part of this, they want to relocate the existing road. It does access some other properties. And there's not a whole lot to tell about it. They're, uh, they're going to replat, basically move the road. They are, they want to do this so that they can better utilize the property. I believe they're putting in our substation down there for Yumitella Electric. I checked with Doug because all of the property owners involved have signed off on this. It doesn't need a public hearing, is that correct? So, the board can simply approve the vacation and then, then they can replat the new road.
Question to comments.
I have that.
I have a question, a couple. The utilities that need to, you said that in the paperwork, that utilities that were there needed to be, needed to get ahold of those companies so that they could move their utilities? What utilities are, is that?
The only one I believe that's there might be the phone. Might be under, underground, buried underground, and they may have to move that one.
Oh, the phone, okay.
But everything else is gonna be over here.
They already moved the irrigation.
Yeah.
And CBA is a property owner there. Maybe a development. They didn't sign off on that?
Yeah, they didn't sign, yeah, they're, if they're not the property of them.
Why would they have signed off on that?
They do have taxes. They annualize the. Yeah, because the Generation Road does access, and so anybody that has, has a legal right to access on Generation Road has signed, everybody has signed off on it.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you.
I would move to adopt order RD twenty twenty-four to have zero five.
Motion, a second. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm sure that'll make the ball.
You are up again.
Yeah, the second item that Public Works has brought is a purchase of a road grader. Every, every year, we, we purchase either one or two road graders to keep our motor grader fleet up in a, preferably we keep them in where they have, all have warranty. Sometimes that slips, but we strive really hard to do that, to keep them so that we don't have a lot of maintenance costs. This particular motor grader is a price of four hundred and forty-six thousand, nine dollars. The, it does come with a guaranteed buyback at five years, or under five thousand hours, for two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which makes our op, which means that we have five-year operating cost that, that ends up being very low. And we have experienced, utilized this buyback before, and it's very painless. And Capes is very good about honoring it, that very smoothly. So, we're essentially just asking to buy this grader. This is a budgeted item, something that we, we planned for in our budget. Delivery on this will be probably fit.
Comments?
I'd move for approval of purchase of the John Deere six seventy-two GP for four forty-six oh nine.
Motion, a second. All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, flooring contract.
Good morning, Commissioners. Daniel and I with Administrative Services here, and also Rachel Reynolds with assessment, because originally this was put into her budget flooring replaced. And we went out for RFP and received three bids, one for thirty-five, over thirty-five thousand, another one over thirty-three thousand, and then the lowest bid was for twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and seven cents to replace all the carpeting in the assessment taxation area with PVC tiling. And the, so Pelton Floors is the lowest bidder. Only thing is, is originally only eighteen thousand was budgeted for this project, so it is eleven thousand over what we, eleven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and seven cents over what was budgeted.
I have to say it came in a lot less than I thought it was. Everything else we've seen, like.
I, I do like the fact that the lowest bid is from right here at Pendleton.
Yeah, substantially lower.
Yeah.
I do have a question, a couple of questions. One, you're replacing carpet and you're putting in laminate, is that correct?
Well, it's PVC tile, so it's glued down, so it's not a floating floor and stuff.
They're not gonna have to, you don't believe you're gonna have to do a lot of prep work on that floor?
Well, this is, has all the, they're doing all the work and it's in the bid, so.
Okay, because some of these bids said that there was no prep work. The other one was, somebody mentioned on their bids about prevailing wage. When do we run into that?
That's fifty thousand, over fifty thousand.
Okay, so they just put that in their bid as. You did, okay. Um, so we're not bumping into that either.
The only other question I had on this, and when you read through the specs of the material, it probably answers a lot of it, but the concern for noise, more noise in the carpet, but if you read through the stuff, this stuff is supposed to absorb sound too, just like carpet and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it would probably increase a little bit too, but you have bodies in there and desk and furniture in there, which, which helps too. But as you said too, it absorbs some of the noise more than a regular old hard time.
They're not playing pickleball in there or something like that.
I have like team building skills.
I think that's interesting, it's a glue down, because most folks now do the floating floor, you know, which puts that thin layer underneath there and which would absorb the noise and that type. Especially in an old building.
Very challenging to do it in the big, big area, the folding floor, because I think you have to have joints after so much space.
I'd move for approval of the flooring to Pendleton Floors, Inc. in the amount of twenty-nine, four forty oh seven, four forty-four oh seven to the assessment taxation.
Got a motion, a second. If we have a discussion, all fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. You're up again, aren't you? Oh, no, Mr. Craigin is up.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Craigin, Supervisor of Elections and Records, Yumitella County. Before you is an invoice from Writer Graphics for printing of the insert in the ballots for upcoming November election in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, four hundred, or twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, the two invoices are split up. One was for the insert, that is going along with ballot packet in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents, and then the ballot printing of twenty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Since this is over five thousand dollars, it requires your approval for payment.
I just hope we have more people than not return your ballot this time.
And to follow up to that, I'm gonna play Commissioner Murdock for a second.
Oh, gosh.
And ask that, at the end of this election, can we tally what it costs the county per vote returned?
Yes, ma'am.
That was favorite one.
Yeah, we're actually required to do that. It's part of the report that we send out to the Secretary of State, not only ballots cast, but the cost per, but ballots, the cost per voter.
Yeah, because we have, we have an invoice. We know how much the ballots cost, so.
And then we have all their time, and we have all the prep and the machine and all of them.
Voter pamphlet, all the labor involved with it. Yes.
I think that we need to command elections because they're doing everything they can to get voters out there. signage and new, all skinny signs, whatever those are called.
Feather flags, yes.
Is it feather flags? Is that what they're called?
That's what we're calling them.
Better flags, okay.
Feather boat flags.
Yeah, in the parking lot out here, you've got, you know, vote, everybody.
We're trying to remind as much possible voters that, you know, not only the voter registration cutoff, which was yesterday for new voters to the state or to the county, but we're also gonna be doing another blitz campaign of have you voted, return your ballot November fifth, so.
Question on that. Do you have any kind of feel for new voter registrations? Were they up this year, about the same?
Uh, to be honest with you, I haven't looked at the numbers as far as what they're trending. We're currently working on supplemental inserting of ballots to go out in this, the overall election, but I'm, I'm sure that's something that we can take a look at.
I have a feeling?
Again, we've, we've been down nose to the grindstone of just getting individuals updated or put on. We haven't taken a step back.
It's a big day too. We have ballots go up today?
Ballots are being mailed today, yes. Residents should expect them Friday or Saturday of this week. And if they don't have them by the twenty-second, we've been reminding them to please give the office a call. We can see what their registration status is or mail them a replacement.
And then mailing them in, or how late will you guys accept ballots? Forever, as long as it's dated before?
Uh, the last dates have to be postmarked by Election Day. Uh, we will accept ballots up to seven days after that, as long as they meet the postmark requirements.
And then, then we're done?
Then we're done.
Okay.
Because then we have to get on to actually certify on the election. And if there is, there's another part to this, and if there is signature issues or if someone forgets to sign their ballot, and it's in by eight o'clock on Election Night, they have twenty-one days to take care and remedy that situation. We will be sending notices to those individuals who fall under that.
Steve, probably, and your whole team.
Hi, can I make a motion? I move to approve the payable Writer Election Services in the amount of twenty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Motion, a second. Got a second? All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. If my father ruined the audience, he would say.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Fair pay.
Just, well, I'll do it. It's frustrating. It's another, another issue of a late vote that should have been in for the bear.
It does actually receive it in the last thirty days, though, the actual invoice. Uh, it matters before the board because of the dollar amount. And it's for the ice for the bear. The crystal clear ink in the amount of twelve thousand, fifty-seven dollars.
No, what's really funny about this is maybe the first year that I can remember that the revenue off of ice was greater than the cost of, which is actually substantial, which normally is not the case.
Bring it forward on some days.
Yeah, there is, and there was on Friday of this year. Um, I move for approval to crystal clear for the amount of twelve thousand, fifty-seven dollars for the cost of ice during the twenty twenty-four fair.
Got a motion, a second. If we have a discussion? All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, Lipstick Appointment.
Hey, this is the local Public Safety Coordinating Council. Uh, we were updating the Commissioner Representative on the council and realize there are a couple of other ones that were a little bit outdated. So, it's before the board is to update the appointments to Lipstick, including the Board of Commissioner Representative.
Is she named? Okay. I'll move for approval. You missed the meeting yesterday.
Got a motion, a second. All fair and the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
One of the most, most interesting committees there is. The first.
Vehicle purchase, item number seven.
This is coming for the board. This is the vehicles for this fiscal year that are being sought. Uh, it's twelve vehicles, ten of which are Equinox, one van for community correction, and then one Blazer. Uh, the purchases are before the board for approval.
How many of these are electric?
They all have electricity.
So, not an electric place?
Not electric.
Okay.
Know if I can support.
I will, I do want to touch on the vans for just a second. I talked with Dale Premer this morning. A van that he is purchasing, if you remember back in twenty-one, twenty-two, somewhere in there, Dale bought a twelve-passenger van, because that was all he could find. In the meantime, the juvenile department has replaced the motor twice in their van, and it is dead. And so what Dale's going to do, or near dead, I guess, what Dale's gonna do is sell the twelve-passenger van to Digna and then replace the twelve-passenger van with this one, so.
Wonder, along the line, not this time around, just let's see, is that our van, so that we can upgrade our van if one of Dale's crews could use that, not this time around.
Yeah, right, yeah, I could put that bucket in there for sure.
Okay, because, um, or is this getting more and more use and?
Yeah. I will say, I was a little skeptical of getting that van, but that was, turned out to be a very good decision.
Yeah, it really has. Anyway, just, I just planted that.
Yeah.
I have a question. How many people can you put in this van? Is that fifteen? Okay.
How many fit in the Blazer? Five passenger?
If it's electric, I think it's five.
Oh, yeah.
Dan's car did save us one day, I have to admit, right, yeah?
I did see you, right? You were trying to hide your face.
I was actually in there before I realized I was there. But I was tired of walking.
Yeah, I can make a motion on that. So, I would move to approve the purchase of vehicles and authorize Commissioner to sign documents with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. If we have a discussion on the motion? All fair and motions, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, with that, we hit the end of our agenda. Final thoughts, Commissioner Doran?
I, I guess I say this each time we have a visitor, but, um, I think one, it's amazing how legislators get educated when they visit Yumitella County. Rep Lively, even being from Willawa County and spending a lot of time in Echo, really did not have a grasp on, on even hearing what it takes to have irrigated egg out of the Columbia River. Yeah, I think it was, I say this every time we have a visitor or visitors, is it was extremely productive. It's worth every second of the trip. Um, every one of these tours seemed to take a little different, different. And really spending time with the brokers and having those discussions, real live discussions on windmills, um, all the way from windmills to irrigation pumps and the new EID, and what was interesting when they asked them, when, when Rep Lively asked them what their opinion on solar was, and brokers were extremely honest, is that, well, if the market stays the same way it is right now in commodities, solar is gonna look really, really good, even on the best of. And, and, um, in reality, it, it probably goes a lot deeper than that because of the depressed markets right now. Unless you're, unless you're raising cattle right now, it is a tough market.
Which is usually the other way around.
Yeah, yeah, um, and sadly, in my opinion, we're gonna see probably some people taking, agriculture people take advantage of the, the push for solar and the people that are out there right now offering contracts. So, I think it's something we need to pay attention to. Those is, those are, those decisions are generational. You can farm around windmills all day long. What a metallic, um, farms, a little bit different. I know that they're getting there. But anyway, and thank you to Yumitella Electric for spending so much time and lunch, having lunch with us. And all of the other people that throughout the county that helped with the tour and dinner. I think it was a very productive day with a very influential representative that's the chair of the Environment, Climate, and Energy.
You know, I, I agree with that sentiment. I remember Senator Hansel talking about the importance of having legislators from the valley come out to the east side of the state and the returns that that brings back to the senate, to the legislature. So, I think anytime we can get a state legislator, state rep from the other side of the state to our side of the state to see how things are done, I think it's a good idea, and I think we should just keep encouraging each other to keep doing that.
Doesn't happen overnight, but we've been planting the seeds for a long time, and now they're starting to pay off.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
We sit in the committee or have, have a, an ad hoc discussion, then those invitations go out. Nothing more powerful than an invitation.
Agreed, agreed. Well done. Commissioner Tim?
Yeah, I, uh, two things. With what Dan had just said, one, we'll talk about commodities for a minute. And something totally different, we have orchards up on our end of the county. Of course, the apples are just rotten on the tree. They just, they can't afford to pick them, and that is a real waste. But, you know, that's, that's the way it goes. And so, you know, to me, that's very disheartening to see that. And, I mean, total orchards, that beautiful, beautiful apples that they're not even gonna try to pick. And I, I think that's, that's tough to watch. It really is. The other thing, I've been in a couple of meetings in the last week or so, public meetings, and there's been some real interest on nuclear. And, and Commissioner Doran, you know, he has brought that forward. And, you know, people are interested in that. They, they wanna know more about it, and the, the talk, when you get into conversation, it isn't negative at all. People wanna know.
On both sides of the aisle.
Mm-hmm, people wanna know, you know, how that's coming and what Yumitella County's heart and that it's gonna be, so. Dan.
You guys are gonna hear some very important stuff before the day's over.
I think it's already hit, the Amazon news.
It had a hit.
Yeah, it hit.
What's that?
Uh, the headline I saw was Amazon is investing in nuclear energy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the whole, I haven't seen it, so I won't say anything yet, because I, I'm under it.
Yep, that, that's literally all I saw. Yep, and that's literally all I saw in the headline, so, as I walked out. All right, well, with that, thank you everybody for the meeting. We are adjourned.